Could you grab the flag? The flag could talk to my. Alright, great evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call this special meeting.
I'd like to call two orders of special meeting for finance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our presentation tonight will be 3:50. That's, did you books this would be 30? Then 3:50, Health Department, and welcome our Health Director Laura Vassilis. Laura, it's gorgeous.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by saying thank you very much for approving the full-time salary period last year. Human Resources and the Health Department have finished interviewing, and we should be bringing the worker on soon to dive in and to get that workload done. And thank you very much for that. With that said, when you look at my Open Gov figures, the, I, all the mine items the same. The only one that is larger is the salaries. And the salaries would be for the new worker and some adjustments that are being made that are part of salary adjustments at the time. And I tried to hold the lines, provide a lot of service output with this thing. And do you have any questions?
Can you, can you explain, does the 49,000 increase that count at all?
Now, so Brian, if you remember last budget season, the Board of Finance has then approved the full-time position for help starting in January. So 40 of the 49 is the other half of that salary for that person. And the other are salary adjustments for the current staff. But the only, the only headcount increase, the one that was increased in the half of the year last year. Yeah, union and non-union.
Um, we had three good campaigns, um, and now we're waiting for Human Resources to tell us. We were brief, we were a bunch of, thank you. No, they, we just completed a project for December. Then we went out and the holidays and COVID, well, we, you know, we went rapid. And now we're waiting to hear someone's, um, what's going.
Okay, now positions in this one?
Correct, yeah. Only half of it was in last year's, but so now the other half of it.
Plus the salary increases.
Yeah.
But the 40,000 that was in the last year, that's not used, correct?
It's, well, it's in for this year. So the Board of Finance and then the town approved this starting January 1st. So because.
So you're going to have to spend that already, basically.
Yeah. They're in the process of hiring that person now. Yep. With the holidays, it got pushed until January 1st, closer to February 1st.
It's kind of difficult to even get all the questions to ask, honestly, just because it was for the past year, whatever. It's been such a, a rut, you know, with the, with COVID and all that, so. Can you, I don't even know how to answer this question. So funds that where we see too many gave COVID. It's, that's not in any way related to anything in here, is it?
Right.
Okay, so did any of it though cover in any way anything that's in your budget per se?
Anything that we could do, the Tom Galliford and I with FEMA or the State Health Department, any available monies to cover COVID work, we went after and we obtained most of it. And, um, and we had some denials. And they would have covered the nurses' contact tracing.
Yeah.
It covered, um, the freezer and refrigerator for putting up the vaccination program to vaccinate 10,000 people, um, and things like that sent me a lot. Brad, and there should be a FEMA account that.
Yeah, I, I talked to Brad and we spent it together. I just, can you off the top of your head?
If I understand your question, what, um, I think what you're getting at is the FEMA money was reimbursed with ex, extra expenses over and above.
Yeah.
So it, so no, the FEMA money didn't cover any normal operating expenses, just the extra.
Okay, so when you went outside of what had been approved, that's what you submitted to FEMA?
Well, I, I didn't go outside of anything that's approved as a Health Department budget, but any work that we did that was COVID-related that we could get reimbursed for, that we, what we had to do, that Tom did.
That's a different answer than what I can just.
No, no, Matt said it just a little different way.
Yeah, and things like the, the contact tracers, the people on the phones, the nurses that were hired to administer shots.
Yeah, that's something, when I say outside of it, I mean, that's something we wouldn't have in a normal year.
Correct, correct.
People to track that pandemic.
Yeah.
Just hopefully you will have it in here, but. Okay, so I might come back to that, I might reorient my question differently.
Yeah, sorry, Cindy.
Yeah, it's okay, I get it.
We stayed within our budget.
Well, Laura, if you, but if you look at the budget book, if you look at prior year actual salaries for Health Department, that's 427,763 in the budget book. Because the way it works, we need an expense account to put it against. So those people, the cost of some of that work went against the Health Department for the pandemic. So revenue went to state miscellaneous revenue on the revenue side.
Okay.
Oh, I guess I don't see that.
How could I, how can I find out what that revenue is?
Uh, you can ask me for it.
Hey, Brad.
Yes.
So, so that's in what I sent Brad today. I don't know if he sent it to you.
Not yet, because I got my part with it.
He's crafting.
So I, I, so I have the numbers. If you want the numbers, the numbers right now, it'll, it'll give you fill. We received $119,000 back from FEMA. We received 75% reimbursement, but they came to 100%. So that covered, um, like Matt said, the info line for certain vaccine appointments, some of the vaccine supplies and equipment. I think it's like 66,000 was just for the nurses. The nurses, um, a bunch of other, so we got, we received 119,000. I shouldn't say that 66,000 we're waiting to get from the state, but the state is cutting the checks supposedly. So of the 119,000, we still wouldn't get 66,000 back.
I don't need to interview, but we could wait till, you know, yeah, because at some point we're going to have that in front of us before Thursday if they get disturbed.
Thursday?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Um, Brad, just a quick question. So basically, the FEMA money, right, gets used like for salaries that went like overtime. Like if you had staff that had to stay late, that can be reimbursed by FEMA. The only thing you can't reimburse is stuff that's actually, so like their base salaries, we had 427.
Yeah, so it can't, it can't, it can't take away anything from the budget, but
Laura had to work late, or one of the people had to work late, you'd get reimbursed for that overtime.
Yeah, so there's different pieces of it. The reimbursement piece, I believe you're correct. Tommy knows more about that stuff. Um, there's also the CRF funds, which are different. It's the whole thing.
But is there anything in this, like, and I guess the question, like, subplanting of funds? Like you can't, like you can't say, uh, we budgeted $1,000 to do some education, but we didn't take the FEMA money and put it there. It has to be outside of your normal.
Correct, it has to be something that's held that's reimbursed. So things such as overtime or part, new part-time people or temporary hires, which the Health Department did for the info line, and for the nurses that administer the vaccine.
The late supplies, do you have to adjust your budget first, or would?
No, if they're COVID-related supplies, they can be reimbursed.
Alright, so you might, right, so you might not have spent all your money because FEMA gave you stuff, and it was okay to do it, so, alright, so some of it could come in a little bit, but it would be basically supplies, COVID-related expenses.
Like you probably could pay for dues or FEMA money if they had just like a special training for COVID, you know.
So do things like COVID, right?
That's what you're.
How many funds?
Something.
Brad, quick question quick. So what you said was with respect to the prior actual salary number.
Yeah.
That's where the majority of the COVID money is embedded.
It's overtime because of that, so. Way, we have to do the accounting. You have to charge it to the account that it belongs to.
Right.
So that's where the additional, it was like 130, probably more than that. Because your budget prior year was probably 250. So it's like $175,000 charges got charged to help, you know, for COVID. The answer to some of your earlier question, our miscellaneous state revenue, which is where we put a lot of that money that came in. We budgeted 282, and we got 697. Uh, the delta of that is 415,000. So between that, stuff that got charged to account hall expense. So, and it's a much bigger question than Tom had a miserable time with this. But the expenses, we try to keep in a couple of different accounts to make it easier. So Tom had to go through and pull all kinds of invoices and everything else to submit all the FEMA reimbursement stuff.
Okay.
He's our FEMA guy. I don't think he likes me, but he is.
It just reflects, because there's no change in office expenses to speak of. Like all that extra stuff went into other accounts.
Yeah, a lot of the hard costs, like all the shields we bought and stuff, went to town hall expense. So when we, when we looked at the count 420, I think it's 420 that has town hall expense in it, you'll see an overage in that as well. So parking wreck had a bunch of fees there because they paid all the part-timers when we had somebody working the check-in desk, and they did all the cleaning. So the expenses went all over the place. The revenue all went for the most part in this one spot.
Where was that one spot?
The miscellaneous state, which was over budget by 450,000. But that was physically year 21, which closed, so.
Good ask, Laura. So Laura, just with the raises, if the $5,000 increase is not related to the new position, is that right?
Yeah, approximately. So Laura has some employees on steps. So it's not just straight raises. Employees that have been here last five years and get up steps. Um, so they have whatever their union raise is for the year, plus 5% if you see a step or even half a cent.
Are they all these employees or?
No, it's, her departments, they have, yeah, but non-union people can be on steps also.
If non-union people can be on steps, what's the use?
It's decided upon their employee. So somebody's hired and says, you make this, but after six months you make this, after another six months, you get this.
It's like a probation.
I understand.
They're eventually going to be on the union?
No, it just, it just, instead of hiring somebody that's not coming in fully trained at 100% of the pay, you hire them at a percentage of them. The union contracts spell out exactly when they get it. A non-union person, it's up the map, and how it lays out, based on their experience.
How many do you have in your department, like, full-time?
Right now, there's three of us. And there's one full, one full-time union person, the admin, and then Brian and I are not.
And your new hire.
And my new hire.
So we have seven altogether?
No, sorry.
Five, four, there's, there's contracted. It says four full-time employees, a nurse and a medical advisor, and then your hiring official?
The fourth includes the new hire.
The fourth includes the new hire, so the nurse and the medical advisor are part of the four?
They're part-time. The, the medical advisor is required by law and paid a stipend. And the nurse pays, in your, in the detailed reports, you would see she gets 3,000 to 4,000 a year. But of course, COVID is not over, so that 3,000 to 4,000 is the nurse. The doctor, uh, the stipend hasn't changed in 25 years or more, is about 5,100. And that's done, and then there's contracted people that kind of goes sort of like a seven-day operation.
Thank you.
I appreciated the support, but we really did, um, worked really hard, Tom and I, to do as many reimbursements as we could for all the different COVID work that had to get done. And he'll provide more details on that later.
So just jumping. Yeah, one quick question here. Um, so I'm looking at the contracted services sheet.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a section that talks about contracted food inspection and training, PHI training, main office coverage. Is that, is that a contracted employee?
Yes, it's like a part-time position. They're not in the union 30 hours a week. And they do food inspections either seven days a week or when the staff is off their union time, they can jump in and cover the office to keep it open, things like that.
So it's kind of like a part, but it's a part-time employee basically married into the contract services one?
Yeah, it's a, well, I mean, they might, sometimes someone will do 30 hours, but sometimes maybe it was two people that do 15 each. And that's how that ended up in there, although we got a really talented food inspector we picked up for hours just now that we're hoping will take more.
Right. And I believe, um, why it ended up in contract services initially, I think they used to be 1099 people, and then over time, we hired part-timers as employees. Right. There's benefits of both ways, so that's why the part-timers aren't there. And we just never made the move to all from there to jump up salaries.
And sometimes they come and go.
Sure.
Because of weekends.
Right, so how many, how many people are in the, in the contracted services that are like part-time employees?
So right now, there's a, I gave you a detailed sheet, let me get it. There should be, there's a food inspector in there, right? Do you see that? There should be. I think I detailed everything. Okay, here it is. So in the contracted services account, our laboratory supplies are 1,605. The mosquito control program is $29,000. The part-time person is 30 hours a week. The, uh, we have two other people that may come and do foodborne illnesses or night or time coverage, and that is, uh, estimated at 14 hours a week. Uh, there's a public health technician that's been in the budget for 25 years that does these reports for you and other analysis for us. That's four, that's 108 hours at 4,000. There is a, um, every year I have a complicated public health case, and if we have to bring in a mold expert or an odor rating expert, that's that $1,000. We either use it or not. We've been using it lately. And then the town of Bethel for the last 40 years will pay for flu shots for anyone that doesn't have insurance. And the town has continued that, just, just flu shots for no, for adults that, or children that don't have insurance, and that gets paid out of that as well. So that makes up that whole 350, 313 account. And I put that on Open Gov.
Yeah, I'd have to download it then. So Brad, um, the, the regular fees from the Health Department, do those go into, I don't know, go into that account too, that, with the ladies?
No, so the fees go into the, they get monthly added with the building fees. Um, so in Open Gov, Laura put in what she's quoted the last year, the last five years, it looks like. Um, which has gone up because working with the Board of Selectmen a couple of years, they increased the cost of the fees and came up with a new fee schedule.
And it's a high workload, so it went from like, you could see it there, but it went like 49,000 to 71,000. Just so you can see how it costs. And remember that for each item, there's a lot of activity per item, like it's not a one-to-one ratio, so.
Okay, I, I just, you know, I'm always interested in revenue.
Good, so and I gave you the detailed sheets too.
Yeah, I, I love those, I just, you know.
So the 71,000 last year for just Health Department fee collected services, and you always ask me, and I gave you the sheet for the services for not fee as well. So we got over 10,000 females, calls, visits, so 10,000, about 20,000 not coming, helping with the schools. And thankful to everybody in the whole community for how we work together as best possible.
I just want to know where it went, how it was accounted for, because I can see, you know, that there's a lot.
And we're hoping to have a really good year.
This has nothing to do with you, just when I hear revenue, all it is is another way of tax, tax. I just want it to be that way. We raise fees, we're really just raising fees on our citizens.
I hear you. I'm not saying income.
Alright.
I'm not saying we.
I just want to say, put it this. But what we're talking about, what they.
Or any of the, any user base, right? So if you're building a home to make a profit, instead of all of the taxpayers taking the burden, it's the guy making the money, you know, so there's, there's, there's a balance somewhere.
I was going to say, a fee is not a pass.
No, right, I mean, you know, somebody being part of the community deserves talent services, but there's a little bit of user base that, you know, equation in there.
Good closing.
Anybody have questions to be answered?
Good.
Thank you, very.
Thanks, Laura. Next, I'd like to welcome up Bethel Police Department, welcome Chief Hugner and Police Division Chair Amy Mannion. Thank you for being here. The rest of the department tonight are signing that.
Well, could you name Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen? Thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Amy Mannion. I am the Chair of the Police Commission. And I along with Chief Hugner and Captain Burns are presenting the budget tonight to you. I'm really happy to be a part of this. It's been a great commission to be on, and we're really excited about this budget. The commission not only unanimously endorsed and approved this budget, we actually advocated as a commission to add additional officer based on the assessment that we have seen and what we are seeing in the town right now. So obviously, Chief Hugner will give you more of the details on the budget, but, um, it's solid and it's definitely need-based. There you go.
Thank you. I first of all, I just addressed it down the line. Um, Brad, you said they had the same, the same sheet already, so you go that way?
They have the, they have this sheet right here that I sent you.
That's what I thought, okay. Yes. So. So the first part of, the big part, obviously, is salaries. So going through salaries, what you see in front of you is all the salaries of all the officers, including myself and the captain, all the dispatchers, animal control, records, clerks, my administrative assistant, and all of the overtime in the department. The big increase, if you obviously see right off your back in salaries, is because we're asking for two additional officers. So I can continue down the list, but I'd like, if it's okay with you said there, Matt? Uh, like to hit on the big points at the end, go over the, is that okay, like that way? Just go through it first and then go through what the increases are?
Anything?
Okay. Salaries, um, another big part of salaries, anything that's contractual, like longevity, holiday pay, educational incentives, it's all contractual. Um, actually, the educational incentive took a big jump up this year because we hired a lot of new officers over the last couple of years. Um, and when they hit a certain point in their probation, then they are eligible for an education incentive. So that's the reason why that jumped up, is contractual. Next big part of overtime is training overtime, and we did request a pretty decent increase there. And most of that is because of a lot of new state mandates when it comes to use of force training, human trafficking, fairer and impartial policing is now a requirement. The list goes on and on. Every year, they keep on adding more and more on us. Um, so with training, we do have to pay some overtime sometimes when we send people to training. We try not to, we try to schedule working, but we do have to budget for training all the time. So office expenses, a little bit of an increase there, and that's mostly because of just inflation. Um, just anticipating a lot of costs going up when it comes to office supplies. We've seen it already with a lot of things, and if we don't plan for that accordingly, we'll run out of money. So that's what the increase in office supplies is. Um, equipment and supplies, a little bit of an increase there also. And biggest reason for that is the addition to first aid supplies. With COVID, we need to have more masks, more gloves, more full suits. And I think we all hope that it goes away quickly and we don't have to worry about it. But I'm sure some other variants are going to pop up again unfortunately. I hope not, but we're going to have to be prepared for that. And hopefully next year, I'm sitting there in front of you, and we could cut that down a little bit. Uh, but that's the, the reason for the increase in equipment and supplies.
Could I, could I just pop in a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So was any of those expenses covered by any sort of?
So some are. Um, sometimes when Tom makes a run and brings back masks, they'll give them to us, some of them. But they get spread out between the fire departments and NT and everybody else. But there's still a lot of expenses, you know, hand sanitizer and, you know, Parel.
But are these not covered by?
I don't think they're doing anymore.
Yeah, this is for the future, it's not for the past. This is what I anticipate.
Okay, so there's no, like, you know how the board then has stuff that's going to expire in 2024? These are just things that were reimbursements. Is that what you were eligible for, for reimbursement?
But this is for the, the next year, so.
I understand, I'm just asking to, to.
Last year, did, did, were, any of your expenses reimbursable by FEMA?
Yeah, some of the masks and some of the gloves they bought, the hand sanitizer that we bought townwide that we expended out all to the department stores, yeah.
But going forward into the upcoming year, you're going to have, you're going to continue to have some needs for those things. And FEMA reimbursements over with now.
It's not over with, but you know, you have to have a, a project that you can, and it's, there's a minimum, like I think it's $3,600, it's a minimal amount we can reimburse for.
So I think, I mean, that would be great, and reimbursing for some of this stuff when we do that with next year. That would be great, but we can't. I don't know.
So for someone who have expiration dates, that, yeah, that's all. I was trying to get.
Like, just as an example, we arrest somebody, um, and we either think they might have COVID or maybe you have COVID. There's like a full body suit their officer wears when they're processed in prison. They're not, they're not cheap. And I remember once, and that's it.
You only have $1,400, that's all that matters.
Yeah.
I just want to make that one right on.
Yeah. Yeah. And that, and also part of that too is the increase in pricing as well with first aid supplies. Everything's increasing. Um, communications that I left at a 0% increase. I think once we, we replaced all the portable radios a couple of years back, we see the kind of ease-off on the equipment repairs, however we do. Our old car radios, that you get repaired often, so I can't decrease it, but I don't have to raise it. And sometimes you do have issues with radio towers and things like that. Um, but some of that money comes off, and some of it comes out of Tom's accounts, but that's of that communication accounts, so no increase. K9 is no increase, bike controllers no increase, very small. Armory operations, very small increase, but that again is because the cost of that initiative is going up. Unfortunately. Training and education, pretty substantial increase there, about a $4,400 increase, 31,000 to 36,000, some numbers. Biggest reason for that is the need for more training, which is not a bad thing necessarily, but some of it is being mandated. which is not a bad thing necessarily, but some of it is being mandated. Addition, we're trying to get ahead of the game when it comes to a lot of the use of force stuff. We are one of the few departments in the state that has GSP instructors. That's Brazilian Jiu Jitsu, the law enforcement. And that's, the training is really meant for when you go hands on with somebody that you know what you're doing. So we don't have to go to the next level. So we don't have to pull out our taser. And ultimately possibly have to pull out our weapon, you know. So we have three instructors right now. And we're actually hosting a training here at the Field House, I think in April, where people are coming all over the country to the training. So that's not a real reason for that increase, but I'm just trying to show you what all the training goes, all the different training there is. Yes, thank you for your time.
I was gonna ask that question.
Yep, so another reason that increased is because the academy is charging its former money. About five years ago, we stayed at cost of zero dollars to send us in the group to rehab. It went from zero, one thousand, fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred, four thousand, boom, 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 year after year.
How many new officers do you have in, in the past year? Have you had?
Past year, I believe there was two last year, then again.
So that's four thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the ways the state handles this budget was just like pushing.
The confusion.
My ball.
The, the training, you say people coming from all over the country, is that funded by some sort of large organization?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're out of California. It's a, it's a really good thing and more and more departments in the area are starting to jump out to it as well. We have two new officers are actually gonna be trained in the next couple of weeks. I say trained, I mean, spend the day with our instructors and just do things. But you gotta keep up on that training, you gotta practice.
Yeah, I was just thinking, this Field House is so nice, that's, you know, why.
And that's where we host it.
Yeah, so we, so we're as department hosting them to come to us to stake in the cost. So we don't have to, so we're trying to find these ways to cut corners.
And that's great, that's what I.
Yeah, and, and it's a good point because, because we are hosting it and we're bringing in these people, they're giving us two free spots to make two more instructors which we do. Which adding a female officer is one of them. Professional services, not much of a increase, but there was some increase because, as you know, with the police accountability bill again, we do have to do psychological testing, it's not required, and drug testing. So this is just updated based on what our costs are. Clothing allowance is just a minor increase, again, just because of costs.
Does that include female officers?
Yes, it will. Contracting services is a big jump. Twelve thousand dollar increase, one thirty four to one forty seven. And out of that twelve thousand, I would say approximately ten thousand of it is because of the need for body cameras. Because we did fun getting the new body cameras, but now every year there's gonna be additional cost with that. Software licenses, server licenses, just, you know, IT things. So again, it's not a cost that we necessarily asked for, we were forced to pay. And the rest of it, there's some other, you know, as time goes on, people increase their fees. There's just so many different things we have contracts on. One thing we did go down a couple of years ago on, I think last year, the year before was the copier, we were able to piggyback on of the high school, with schools. So we went from a lot higher to, you know, lower. So wherever we can, we try to save money.
Again, another good question. So Brad, when you tell, you presented the IT or data processing. And, and was that for, does that include the police department's licenses?
So the police department runs it around IT.
Okay.
So any IT costs for the police department is in the police budget.
Okay, there's a standard station. I understand, just a vacant station.
Yeah, and it's a security issue, right? And why they do run it separate.
Yeah.
It's not intermeasurable because they have that, and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I wasn't saying you gotta hack in system, I'm talking about who's gonna pay for it. So that's really.
They pay their own.
Yeah.
We have the hack in. Who else has?
Who hasn't?
So, you know, the, the list is long, which is all the different contracts we have with software payroll system, evidence management software. Every year, ahead of time, Captain Burns will, when I do the budget, we'll reach out to all people, see what our costs are gonna be for this coming year. So, so all this stays the same, so none of it goes up. None of it usually goes down. The big part of it is the mobile data for all of the police vehicles. So when they run the road with a computer in the car, they have to pay for all the data. We have one of them in plans, but that's a pretty big expense every month for that. Capital equipment, it's a little deceiving. It always looks like a big increase, but it's really not. We usually ask for four cars, we're getting four cars almost every year for a while. And then the last three or four years has been cut down to three or four, five years to cut down to three. So when I ask, go back to my ask before, it looks like a huge increase. Which it really isn't, it's just staying the same as last year minus.
Just numbers for cars.
This is numbers for four cars with the equipment. And you probably remember last couple of years, I was explaining the difference with these new cars. We can't transfer a lot of the equipment over. Within a couple of years, we should catch up with some of that and start to increase in 2020s. Two or three years from now, that equipment will be transferred over some of it at least.
So I'm sorry, so each, each car is about sixty thousand dollars. If you take the request of one ninety five as the addition of fifty one, that's, that's for a total of four cars.
Correct.
At two, two ninety five, that's worth about it.
One ninety five.
One ninety five is fifty one.
Fifty thousand a car.
It's fifty thousand a car, fifty one. He has.
Yeah, fifty one zoom.
Yeah, that's.
Fifty one, four cars.
So like, there are some stuff in that that's not related to the car.
Oh, you're just, yeah, okay.
Radar configurations, five grand, vehicle light bars, seven two hundred, computer harbors, eighty five hundred. Just for the cars and the changeover of the cars is one thirty nine, one twenty five.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Four nine.
Yes, there's other coordinates in that account.
You get to four cars.
Like, there's some, uh, new computers for the cars because the life expectancy and that is not that great. So we have to replace them every year, light bars, a new rate, one new radar unit, and defibrillators, one defibrillator. We, you know, we carry defibrillators in every patrol car, so every year we try to replace them. Does that get cool as well?
Silent tip, if, 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 and then we put into capital for cars, capital everything.
We did last year for one, but it's, it's, it's kind of a thing that gets used up. It's like ammunition, you know? They're saying it only lasts two, three years for a car. So you're saying it doesn't make sense if capital.
Rick, the biggest non-recurring capital. The biggest problem with that right now is that cars, when they produce police cars, they just produce a bunch all at once. So it's like hit or miss that you get them, so that's why it's better than this capital because when they're available, I can get them. If it's in capital not recurring, I gotta say, hey, we got some cars, can you hold them? Maybe might be able to get one. Then I have to go, you know, unfortunately meetings aren't every day. So it's important that it stays in capital.
So you can.
Yeah.
Access to it.
Yeah. So with that, I think the biggest ones I, things I've addressed in the packet I gave you guys here tonight, if you just go through quickly, page by page, or. Request for officers, I have narrative in the first page there. I don't know if you can kind of read it while I'm sitting here talking, but. The biggest reason we need more officers is that we are busy here in Bethel. We are busier than other towns around us. We are getting busier and busier every year. It's not slowing down. Our demographics are different than a lot of the towns around us. We have more apartments, we have more two family houses. And unfortunately, keep on building normal. And when that happens, it creates more calls for service for the police department. If you go through my.
Graphics are next.
Yeah, my graphics here. The first page alone is just calls for service. And I went two thousand eight, I jumped up two years at a time, again, I used the last few years. Can you look at the difference? You know, back in two thousand eight, we were around four thousand calls for service. We're up to almost sixteen thousand last year.
Are you including motor vehicle stops and self-initiated act?
Yes.
So when you break that out, like, you know, Rich, I think we average seven thousand call, actual call for people, calls in police department. Where are you guys averaging seven?
I can't say off the top of my head, but I'm gonna do it first time. But the reason I, I, I showed a few different ways how it shows that we have increased calls. Yeah, you're right. Call for service is a good indicator, apparent department, the department.
That was true, too.
Yeah.
We have twenty something thousand calls for service.
Yeah.
Fourteen thousand of them were officer initiated, you know.
Yeah.
And at least there's something calls for service of seven thousand, you think's a fair number. Eight thousand, somewhere around that.
I would have to look. I would have to admit to it.
You can do that, that's your.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
So from two thousand eight, it's about thirty percent increase in the number of calls for service. For two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty one, so fifty percent increase. The page after the call for services is financial crimes. And the reason I did that is because it's, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, we probably barely had any of this in here. Now it's what we keep having to work on more and more and more to the point of what I would do with one of these new officers, which have been assigned to financial crimes. Wouldn't be the only thing they did. But with financial crimes, just as an example, Cynthia, someone steals your identity and opens up a credit card and spends all kinds of money in Texas. Well, we'll get your complaint. We'll work it as much as we can, which includes expert pay warrants that we just have a court reaching out to all the, you know, cell services, all the internet providers, trying to get data to link into someone. A lot of the cases are dead end cases. However, we feel that it's our job to investigate and find a suspect if we can. And some of them turn into really big, nice cases.
But in terms of the time commitment and utilization of your officer's time, that's much higher than what we would have been saying until they went into the corner store and stole a jug of milk.
Correct. And we're taking people off, you know, people getting pulled off patrol work with these cases when they come in. It's, it's very time consuming. It's very time consuming and they're not out the road. Enforcing traffic stuff and other, other things. So we will let, if we got this, these two officers, that would be one of the positions that I would create when they got out of the academy or before that, to help counter the big increase in financial crimes. Again, they'll be doing other things too, but they would be the sole persons that would be doing that for the most part. That's the reason I showed that first. I'm seeing the increase in that, that's only gonna grow.
Well, that, that makes total sense because they just internet and cybercrime just to even investigate it. There's a whole range of skills that not everyone has.
That's correct, true.
You know, even if you said that's all they were gonna do, that would make sense to me.
Yeah, well, there's also a second.
That's a big deal.
Part of that is actually to physically look at a computer, like physically take evidence off a computer, what do you see computers? We have two guys that are certified in doing that now. If, again, if you got this position with this person and you want them to do that as well.
Do you have a detective bureau to take care of this kind of work then?
Some of them do, so some of these cases will end up in the detective bureau. And the part of the pulling evidence off the computer is the detective.
So this position wouldn't be patrol, it would just be added a position to the detective bureau?
Yes, yes.
Chief, what was your arrest rate for last year?
Next page. Oh, last year?
Yeah. You showed the different towns, so just what did it compare to last year?
I might have it here in my pile. I don't have it in front of you, but I believe it was in the three hundreds. I believe, yes, got it in front of me.
So four hundred and five, are these all NIBR offenses? Are you including motor vehicle charges like suspension, misuse of points of use or S?
This is all from NIBRs.
So I reason why one of these will be a NIBR.
Yes, correct. What's a NIBR offense? It's what's reported to the FBI.
Yeah, NIBRs, NIBRs only want certain arrests reported.
The bad arrests.
They don't have to be bad, and so they'll take some things.
But not really violent.
Yeah, they won't take operating or suspension, they're not interested. So these are actual criminal offenses.
And this is from two thousand eighteen. I was not able to update this in time to be transparent, or numbers weren't as big last year. But we're still the highest, I know that.
Well, that's because of COVID.
Hardly, yes. Next one, another indicator of call line increases is nine one one calls.
Maybe this is helpful for you too, Brian, to see the breakdown of that, like the calls for service idea.
Right, so are these nine one one calls just police calls or?
These nine one one calls that come in, so you can pull up to the state nine one one.
Yes.
Website, all nine one one calls per by town. So I just wanted to show the increase in our dispatch center. Yeah, it might not be all police calls. It might be a fire call, might be an ambulance call.
I just don't wanna steal from them, so.
But then it's fine, fire, fire, it's gonna respond to that, yeah, because that will always feel like that.
Will you go on all, all, any?
Do you go on all fire calls too?
Yes.
Okay, so it kind of doesn't matter. If you didn't call for service, you're gonna respond to it, correct?
Yeah.
So you guys can go on automatic on speed, it's like another.
So again, I'm just trying to show, because there's so many different data and it could be argued, but this is why nine one one calls is a good indicator of how busy we are. And if you go over, what is the next page? Last year's numbers by town. You can see where we are compared to Newtown's the next busiest by nine one one calls. And you can see that graph shows us, again, we're the busiest town around us, our size. And you can see different towns like Paris.
Chief, you think that's because of apartments?
I think that's part of the reason, like, I think.
Other towns don't have apartment buildings?
No, but I think we have a lot more. A pop, we have a, a population density is a lot.
It's one of the highest, and in fact, Newtown built and they have something like three acres of it.
Yeah. So we have a small, we're one of the smaller towns area wise.
Eleven hundred per square mile.
Well, we're, we're busier. That's one of the reasons, the other reason is we bordered the embryo, a bit part of our, our town, these other towns don't. I know, they don't like it when we compare to other towns, but we have to, it's the only thing we can do. Arrest in Bethel, that's just to just show you how it's been going up over the years.
Quick question, you said that it transparents, it had come down.
A little bit, yes.
What, what's your explanation, why is it coming down a little bit?
I think part of it was COVID. I think part of it is we weren't as proactive because of COVID and unfortunately, police accountability bill, we know, those guys weren't motivated fortunately, but that's my problem. And I think a lot of it, like burglaries, for example, burglaries went like way down because people are working from home now. But a lot of other things have gone up, like people don't know about motor vehicle deaths, so. Yeah. Things like that. And those usually result in arrests, so. Exactly.
But there was a, you know, a specific effort to kind of pull back on our officers during COVID and we were really kind of minimizing their interactions, for lack of a better word. So we certainly weren't having to like go out there. Yeah, like I, I read today that the state police is gonna like ramp up efforts again. Is it, is that something we would expect probably?
We have already.
Say more.
Yeah, okay. We, we did back in the fall, late fall, when the police commission meeting we had. And then back in December, late December, when the COVID numbers were up, we've sent out, there were still new traffic stops, but we weren't. Yeah, and, you know, but they're out there, February first, was that, we've got, as we said, let's go. Next page shows a number of officers per town of similar size in the area. So again, I know some people won't like to hear this, but when Newtown, Monroe, Wilton, you know, missing one, at forty five officers, that's, it came, there's six officers more than we have. I'm not asking for six officers, only you're asking for two, because that's what I know.
But you know, their budgets are so much bigger than ours.
Yes, so are. Yes, some are.
Well.
Some in Monroe, Newtown, but, um. But again, we don't, they don't have as much crime as we have.
I understand, but.
Yeah. Population of Bethel. Everybody knows it's increasing. This projection was taken off the Newtown website, you know, cause it's just. Google projected population. I don't know how accurate that is. Honestly, I don't think it's that accurate, but I think we're definitely gonna be looking at a, a big population increase again, unfortunately, in the next ten years. It's not gonna go down. So that's my. Kindness feel about police officers. I've come, I've been coming here now with Chief Finch, prior to me, and we've been asking for officers over the last four, five years, like repeatedly. And we've gotten some which we're very grateful for, but we need more. And. Last year I asked for one, um, you know, and it was, it was a good year because of COVID, we could probably give you one next year. Well, here we are next year. And two officers have put us at forty-one. This, you know. We need more, we need more officers, two, three more officers right now, I'm asking for two this year. And, uh. I hope that you guys can do it this year, really truly do.
You guys asked for one last year or two?
We asked for one last year.
Did we give you one last year? I remember you said we're gonna give you one this year.
Year before and then two years before that, we got one more. So let's say back up to two thousand.
We've gotten two over the past three.
We've gotten two over the past. But again, as you can see, we've always been in kind, trying to catch up.
I, you know, for me, I'm most certainly gonna stick to our word, say, you know, I think you should have a police officer this year. You know, I'll support adding a police officer this year. For me, I'd like to spread it out over two years, just because, you know, we do have other requests and we have to like that all, but that would be for deliberations, but I do recall. Saying that police officer would have this year, but I, I do, I do recall that.
I respect that.
The new guy, sorry for him, it's turning out there, but I understand under salaries, the overtime is included in there. Was there an increase in overtime for this coming season? Than last year? So if, if the budget, if, if you spent eighty thousand, you had budgeted, is it still eighty or did you increase that number?
No, so our overtime, without training overtime, was two, two eighty.
Last year. Two hundred and eighty.
Yeah, and that includes, um, dispatch overtime and is overtime. I did ask for increases, six thousand dollars, which is a two percent increase, and the only reason I did that is because salaries are increasing. Um, I've been able to keep overtime around two eighty for the last five years, which. In reality, it's been, I've been decreasing it every year because salaries go up every year and I've been able to keep the overtime line at the same. So really I've been decreasing the overtime by two percent for the last five years. So at give or take, you know, it varies a little bit year to year, but it's been averaging about two eighty.
A budget year that you, you increased big officers, does, does that automatically take the overtime dip in for a minute or for, for a season?
So for an even stake. We had two new officers. In a year or two down the road, when we finally got that officer hired, then on the road. Their overtime would decrease a little bit, but it's not gonna decrease significantly.
It's not down for now.
So most of, most of the overtime is. Generated, I can, I can just give you an idea of what we did last year now, because I just have to add it up front in there. So last year we did about two eighty-six, um, in overtime. Um, of that, ninety-eight was dispatch. Fifty thousand dollars was in grants or some of that is reimbursed. Category is a short shift is forty thousand dollars. That's when we contract a lot of base, you have to get an officer on the road. Um, uniform is just additional, which is thirty-six thousand, which is just additional time to eat officers. In other words. Case comes in at the end of the day, um, you know, we had the apprehension of a guy from North Carolina, South Carolina the other day. Well, we're paying overtime for people to keep the perimeter for twelve hours up there, you know, no way around it. And just miscellaneous stuff, and then a big part of that, and, well, taking the training out of the budget. Uh, and we, like I said, we've been able to keep that steady pace over the last five years. Brad, I don't know if you have the numbers, Brian, you are now, but, um. You know, one year it might be two seventy, next year it might be three eighty-five, it's been averaging about two eighty for the last five years.
Ninety-eight thousand is a guarantee.
Pretty much.
Does any, for the new members, they have, uh, a minimum of two dispatchers per shift. They only have one night dispatchers.
Yep, so whenever.
Ninety-nine thousand takes a vacation, they have sick day. They cost overtime, so ninety-eight thousand's guaranteed, that's.
The ninety-five?
Ninety-eight thousand is guaranteed.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's guaranteed, and that goes off with your contractual basis.
I have no, it's actually, in, in the budget, it's actually ninety-five, Brian?
I mean, it's gonna be ninety-eight or thirty.
Well, at what point would you add another person to dispatch?
It, it's. Because when you have the third person there, they're not really doing anything. There's really nothing to do for a third person there. There, you can make the argument, it might be a dish or something, because they got a lot of people coming into the window. Uh, but we also, we do, police department have two windows now, so. A lot of them that would go through the window for records, now they're going to show straight to records, so, um, that's the problem with that.
So I have one, Madam Chair, thank you for being here tonight, being part of the discussion. My question to you is. Chief said that he, he originally requested to the, to the, uh, your board, one officer. And you said that the board manuously voted to add two officers. What was the statement or what was the evidence that you had that you said, oh, we're not set this, we're gonna have two officers?
I think it was the kind of historical context of two things. One, one piece is a lot of the technology crimes, for lack of, from a layman's term, and the other piece is the traffic. We consistently, as a commission, hear from the public, hear from the first placement office, that people are concerned about people driving through the town, people. With traffic. It's, it's an ongoing issue that we, that we just take on as a commission. So I think we were thinking, we have also been able to utilize. Because we've had some issues with the school and SRO, we've seen people be able to kind of use some time in traffic. And we've seen the benefits of that, and we've seen the community say, we saw someone, we're seeing them down there, we're doing that. So the idea of also earmarking someone who could really focus on. That travel and traffic aspect of really being out there and being present and kind of. Having that, um, was really our kind of response to what we're seeing feedback from.
So it wasn't data driven, it was more of an opinion from people in Bethel that said, hey, we need.
Yeah, I would say it was anecdotal, anecdotal data from our time and on the commission. And just what we're seeing, and I think what we've seen increases in, um, concerns and traffic issues.
So if you got one, would it be computer crimes or patrol?
I don't know.
Well, that's a decision.
It probably, it probably would be patrol, uh, constraining trucks.
If I, if I might, I want to. Uh, Amy and I, Chief and I had discussions about this. My office, to, to your question, I think those, those two things are linked, because if you're, listen carefully to what the chief said. Because the officers are pulled into, uh, identity crimes. They're in the office, they don't have the time to go on a, a road patrol. And I will tell you that my office has received in the last two years more complaints about speeding, reckless driving, going through signal stop signs. Uh, blowing past, uh, school buses with the lights on than ever before. And there was just an article in the Connecticut Mirror that I shared with, uh, the chair and the chief. That, uh, the gent rating in Connecticut last year went up for the first time in years. And it is pandemic related for some reason, I don't know why, maybe when it became visible that the police were. Not patrolling as much, uh, that there was less traffic in the road, people who started driving faster. We even had a, had a fatality right over by the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, that's, that's where a nursing sheet is. It, it varied how speed, it's a twenty-five zone, it's, I mean, it's, it's amazing, but, uh. I see those two things as like, uh, if, if he has, if the department has the officers they need, then they will be able to. Do the, do the cybercrime stuff, but also have some work with officers to go on a patrol, because it's got to be a big issue.
Can I just hear something? Follow up?
No, no, I'm good, no, I'm good.
No, I want to just follow up with that real quick, Brian.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things to answer for Amy as well. The commission asked me when I presented the budget, they said, they asked me, how many officers do we need to have right now, do you think we need to have right now? I said forty-three, that's three more. That's why they decided that, one of the reasons they decided to add the second one back here.
Chief, uh, do we have a bit on, uh, a straight of, uh, military leave?
Yeah, we have one person.
We still have that person, doesn't it?
Mr. Chersky.
Amy, I guess from a commission standpoint. If we gave you two officers this time. How long do you think it would be before you guys come back and request more officers? Realistically, and Steve, if you have the answer, you know, I mean, a year, we want forty-three, we need, you know, two fatality.
If you, listen, if you, I can't speak for the commission, because there are such a charge.
Oh, I understand, that's why I asked, I want to.
You want me to answer, I don't? If you did this to, to officers this year. I wouldn't ask for one next year, but I, I'm telling you right now, you need to be around forty-two. This will get us to forty more.
I think the, I think, I hear what you're saying about spreading it out, I think the need is more. Imminent right now. And I would support the chief in not having additional requests next year, were we to get those two this year. I can't speak for the rest of the commission.
What about staggered, one right away than one to the half year?
Yeah, that's what Brian was saying.
But I know we've done this.
All right, um, I don't see any more questions about that topic.
I would just like to make a statement. And this board obviously changed to more conservative decisions, okay? There's a lot been said in the last couple of days, there's a lot said on the internet that we're not trying to defund the police. We don't want to overfund the police, we want the police to have exactly what they want.
Oh, I agree.
We, we give computers, we buy radios for the police, the, the fire department, we, we know who our first responders are. It's not that we want to defund the police, we have to just answer to everybody in this town, so, thank you.
So Chief, do you have an idea on your, uh, services that they come that you make?
So, um, Brad wants the numbers different than I do, but, uh, how old are your two thousand twenty? You made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then last year I think it was declined for whatever reason, um, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand.
Are you talking about the police cars, the extra duty? Oh, revenue, so, you don't get that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a percentage.
So, uh, if there's any more questions about the new officers' salary?
We're talking about just the profit on her fifty percent.
I, I am fiscal year, and fiscal year twenty-one is a hundred and seventy thousand.
Does that include your charge for initiative?
Uh, yeah, and there's like a couple of.
Uh, to return to that.
It was a fifteen percent or something.
It's, it's lower than.
Yes.
Does that include the ones after yours?
It must be. Cause I only have it by the hourly rates, so that must be the additions that happen. Okay. Um, so if there's any more questions about the, um, overtime and salary, the next big one is, uh, vehicles. I'd just like to go over that real quick, um. I think I have a part, as part of, um. Open government's attached. Um, been asking for four police cars every year for a while, probably. The last ten, twelve years, because that's what we need. Um, once in a while we can cut down to three, and we make it work. But we haven't had four police cars in over five years now, and unfortunately, it's really caught up to us. And one of my sheets towards the end, of our current vehicles. And the yellow is ones that we really need to replace, we see there's more than four of them. Um, and then the green are anticipated replacement following. So my point is, is. We can't cut this gap, we really need to keep this up and forward, because we really playing catch up now, keeping our fleet in the shape that we keep having. Um, these cars are only good for eighty to a hundred thousand miles, and then they really start to break down. And it's just not mileage. These cars, they idle a lot, and as you can see on my last page. Just as an example, car with ninety thousand miles has with ninety-three hundred idle hours. Is equivalent to a vehicle having three hundred and twenty thousand miles. So it's not your part of the parking garage, I mean, it's a patrol cars out on the street. And they're also in the officer's office, look inside the pictures, you see what some of them look like, but it kind of trade in. Trade them in, um, they're beat up, they have to work in that car most of their shift. So, again, that's. It looks like an increase on here, is an increase, but it's really not an increase, just asking what we should add.
It was, are they two thousand fifteen, so those like SRO cars or those on patrol?
Um, good point, Brian, uh, they were sergeant vehicles, that's why they have, they're actually extra duty cars right now. Um, they're really starting to fall apart because they're, they're out idling and running and, you know, they're down a lot. So we would replace them, but we slide other older cars back and do the.
You have cars just assigned to.
The two, the right down at one oh eight, one oh nine on there are assigned to extra duty.
And so we're gonna get a car now?
Yes, sir, um. One oh two and one oh seven are SRO cars.
It's cool, so who those purchases will go or not?
Everything for SRO, their salaries, the cars is out of our league. Um, one ten, the other car that we see there is now part of patrol. It actually was a lieutenant's car for a little while and. Because it had low mileage, but it was an older car, we decided to push it back to patrol and. We took some of the old equipment, because it would fit in that car, and it put it as patrol vehicle.
That is patrol, that may have parked.
That is right now, no.
Should you?
Yes. Yes. Full disclosure, we were talking about that. Unmarked, unmarked.
Uh, I, I would like to see an unmarked vehicle for traffic.
Is that detective car unmarked right now that went back to patrol, or you let her go?
No, that was always let, it was a lieutenant's car.
You have laptops for traffic, right?
We don't have any traffic.
Nope. You don't have any crews or something?
There's one that's a flat top.
Called the flat top.
Yeah, one that's one ten, that's a flat top, because it was lieutenant's car. I don't think we had money for flat tops, made it a flat top, and now it's, like I said, it's back to patrol, it's, it's really full of. So if there's any questions?
There, there was a, there's a number here about, you know, some of these older cars, I can't imagine a car with thirty thousand miles. You know, the cost of maintenance, you know, at some point, really becomes a big issue.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything like, I don't know, that put together to show, or is it pretty much, does it make sense to?
There's numerous articles, uh, police chiefs magazines, police, whatever magazine, you know, fleet manager. That, that eighty to a hundred thousand mile range is really when they put out a stretch. When they hit the eighty or ninety thousand miles. Things like water pumps start going. To replace a water pump in a Ford Explorer, I was gonna go to the dealership, they pulled the engine out of the vehicle. Can they do it to Ivan Garage? No, they can't, they can't. Um, a lot of these things that they used to be able to do, they can't do anymore, so that means the burden is on their budget. And the cars are on the service all along, now when it goes into a water pump, it's up for two weeks, set up for two days. I mean, when I was growing up, I had my seven, eight children pick up my water pump wet. My father's trigger it out, go to the parts store and get a water pump, and I figured it out and replaced it.
You told your brother. He told your brother.
But, um, I don't, there's any more questions about the cars?
On the second to the last, can you hear those, like, vintage?
Well, that's, that's probably what we have. That's currently what we have.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's our dirt job. It's our dirt job car.
They're, they're props, they're the old episode, correct?
Chief, have you looked at it?
Different type of.
Electric, electric.
No, there hasn't been um, anything yet for, Ford did have a hybrid two or three years ago that they came out with, and they stopped making it already, so I don't know if they have issues with it, or not for police patrol, I know some, I think Redding has one. Uh, not electric yet, I know there will be at some point, I know Tesla did something with police car. But we're probably talking about a hundred thousand dollars for a police car. But, listen, I think someday you're gonna see that for every, all, all cars.
Maybe we can find a grant.
They could school once, if they could.
Is there any uh, questions about cars?
Chief.
Get that going.
Looking for your extended warranty, you better check that.
That's the other thing, they don't have a little warranty.
That's another great point.
Police vehicles do not have the same warranty as Chevy that you buy from Binger's lot. For, for all, it is a lot lower right there, yeah.
People might be hopeful in the future, if it was a schedule, uh, four cars this year, next year I'll need this money and like, break it out over your fleet, so we, you know, let's see, alright, well, we do four cars this time, and we get caught up, it'll be, you know, four one year, three the next year, four one year, just so we kind of have an idea. I understand, but two thousand fifteen, hopefully a police car, I get it, I sat in a long set of years, so, that's an old car, you know. For at least fifty years, I have to go.
You're a banker now.
Yeah, you don't.
You know, what I'm saying is, it's just some sort of schedule, so we know if we do four this year, you know.
The, the schedule's been really honestly is just a four year, and then, you know, we had a, we'll have a tough year, or, you know, a tight budget, go to three and survive that three, um, but if you want like, three, four, four would be ideal if we got caught up, something like that. But we need to get caught up, we can't, we can't cut cars anymore else. So, is there any other questions about anything then? So, my one last point I want to make is, in two thousand twenty-two, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty, my budget, that's my budget, this budget was cut a hundred thousand dollars, two thousand twenty-one was cut a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Last year was cut sixty thousand, that's three hundred and fifty-eight thousand over the last three years. My increase this year is only three hundred thousand, I'm only asking for what I need, that's why I come here in front of you guys every year, it's just ask for what I need, I don't have any fluff in my budget. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, every time.
Thank you. Next up, uh, Tom Yelton, Department two ninety, emergency management. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, three hundred fireworks. I'm good, how's everybody doing?
Very, very good.
Uh, so for the three hundred account, um, you only came to do for the salary account. That's really as far as anything else, but uh, also just expensive training, education, et cetera. Uh, we totally know, uh, no need to increase any of that this year again. Where are we at with that? Um, there is another COVID change coming through, which is gonna be affected probably October, but again, with the uh, the office expenses, we're going to purchase to get, go up through the cold looks, uh, a lot of it's online, so that's.
I'm good, I'm.
Personal question, that's it.
Yeah.
So, do you want to go to two ninety now, emergency management, I'll take that.
No, let me ask you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah. I know Paul's not here.
No, Paul, we're here.
So. Right, we talk about all the time.
Fire permits.
We need to.
I spoke, I spoke to Marty Lawler, we need to uh, enact an ordinance in order to get a new schedule for that.
So it's something, he just sent me a bunch of organs, so he's been working on.
Fifty-three pages.
I mean, we issue sixty burning per- permits a year, two dollars a permit, you know, if we raise it to twenty, I mean, I don't know how much higher you'd go.
Well, I thought we'd take four of them, a front permit, a burning.
You want to bang an old lady that wants to burn her leaps on?
Oh, people just build fires in their backyard and get a hot dog and a stick, and say that they're having a barbecue, come on.
So since, since we opened it, so is it still true that you have to go inspect the pile before it starts?
Yeah, we have a lot of, um, we meet customers, people that do it all the time, so we've gone out just once or twice, and if they want to burn again, you know, the, the, some, some of the photo, or we just, we know, they know the rules.
But that's still practice, that you want to make sure you know that legislation there before they start writing. How much fire were you standing on?
Oh, man, they're good.
Yours eight dollars.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, we're having.
Okay, so yeah, go ahead and roll in the two ninety.
Emergency emergency.
Emergency management, so two ninety, um, again, the increase here is for the uh, thousand dollars for the radio tower lease. Again, at the top of Spring Hill Tower is the uh, we leased the uh, building there and space on the, on the uh, cell tower for police, fire, EMS, and public works, uh, two-way radio communication. So that, uh, it was bought out again by another company, American Towers owns it now, but this is the last year of a five-year lease, uh, and that's just the annual increase for that, uh, for the tower, so it'll be like twenty-one thousand now per year.
So is that really every, are we gonna expect an increase every year?
Yeah, the, the contract was a, a five percent increase each year, so I think next year it's up for renewal, so we, we'll have to see what this new company has.
And how long was the contract that you signed?
I believe it was five years.
So you know what the fees, I mean.
Yeah.
It's five years.
Yeah, we played catch up for a while because it was in different accounts, and it's only got it.
We tried to slide the cover.
We tried to buy it.
Right. This sounds like we can try by this time.
Yeah, four or five years ago was the last.
No, that was a few years back, where it's, they wouldn't sell it.
This time they didn't sell it to us either.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, it's a trust, I just changed.
Yeah, it did, but that's the one they're talking about, we tried before, when it changed sand that time.
Well, if it changed hands, get after it, that was, that was a private deal.
And they never notified us that it changed, yeah, and we were, we actually never notified that it was sold, we went up there to go up to, up there, and the gate was, had a different.
That's how I found out that. That's always a bad, yeah, it's too late, definitely.
Spring Hill, very top of Spring Hill Tower. So anyway, that's, that's going to be a small increase for that there. I don't want to ask about some of the female managers or things like that, but.
Well, Brad, put your hand up.
Okay.
Me, I gotta put together the other schedule on that side.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Great, that's it. Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Let's see, have the best work.
I mean, I'm gonna welcome up, uh, why, why, why don't we have both fire departments come up with, uh, CJ Brown as the commission? Uh, welcome. And we'll start with, we'll start with three ten, with the chief McCollum and DJ Brown for chair of the fire commission. Alright. I'll start by saying, uh, I'm DJ Brown, chairman of the newly formed fire commission, so this is a lot of learning curves here, so I apologize, and I don't have a handout for you, but I'll try to answer all your questions for the best I can. Beginning with uh, Chief McCollum. Uh, beginning with Chief McCollum, um, with uh, number three ten for the Bethel Fire Department. Um, he came to us this year with a proposed budget of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. From a current budget last year of one hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, Chief McCollum was uh, good enough to work with us, uh, he made several voluntary cuts on his own, um, and then together the budget, uh, sorry, the commission was able to come up with a proposed budget uh, for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three of hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a five percent increase.
So this sheet.
So this sheet, this sheet needs to be.
We have a thirty-six percent.
Right, I have a new one, I have the old five percent.
No. Five percent.
I thought I printed that new one, probably.
Guys, look, it's a, so it's.
I mean, it sounds much better now, because what I'm looking at is pretty hard, I'll take it. Alright, I'll go print the new ones for that.
Yeah, that'll set up.
And, uh, the one for the.
Yeah, I'll print that one too.
Well, no, Sony Hill is right.
What do you have for Sony Hill?
Check forty-eight five, one thirty-eight.
What's the total?
You know. One fifty.
Alright, so.
I know what I mean.
I, uh, for Sony Hill, you should have, and I gotta work with Brad on this, if we notice a discrepancy today, it should be one sixty-five, two hundred thousand.
That's not what we have.
No, that's not.
I'll print both of them.
What's that?
Hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Yes.
So Sony Hill?
Yes.
What's that?
It's like a sixteen percent. Um, actually, Chief Baker has several handouts, he can give you that, and this, this is exactly what we, uh, ended up deciding.
So that was one ninety-two, two sixty-five.
Yep, correct.
Sony Hill is one sixty-five, two hundred.
Yes, correct.
So what, with, uh, I mean, what was, I guess, what was taken out from, from two hundred and fifty thousand, what big thing kicked out, was that just?
So, uh, the chief had put in, uh, the, some big ones were contingencies that he had, uh, put in which were removed. And, uh, we just thought that if there was any issue during the year, we'll, you know, we'll come to you and work on the capital, uh, it's not recurring for that, for those items.
So I'm assuming it's, it's in the, uh, equipment and supplies.
Yep, uh, so there were some other, um, you know, items that the chief had come to us that, you know, he was hoping to get, uh, some new equipment uh, and technology that, um, as a commission, we felt, you know, maybe this year wasn't the best year, and, uh, so we tried to take some other avenues, whether through grants or, you know, fundraising to, uh, try to obtain new equipment and, you know, work on, so we do check out.
Or ARPA funds.
Or ARPA.
We talked about ARPA funds.
We can discuss the ARPA fund.
Great, good. Do ARPA funds come to the town first, or do they go to the department?
I'm sorry.
ARPA funds, which are special emergency services, they live in the department of the town, through, through the town. Okay. Or is it something that the town has to decide, or your marker, they kind of call me their mark tour?
I think that it was Tom, Tom was, uh, Alfred was very involved in that, like sort of amassing all the invoices, were you, have any things to do in that?
That was the ARPA money, no, that's.
Okay, so that's the.
That's not me.
The ARPA.
That's a lot of money.
I know, I know, but there are. Who gets that one?
No, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't come near my, it has to be, if you go.
So would you, uh, uh, would they put in for it, and you would make the decision, is that how that work?
Yeah.
Where did the radios go, man, now to jump off subject, which we're kind of waiting for Brad, if we, we approve four hundred thousand, we're gonna see if it could be paid with the COVID money, that's what I call it.
Yeah.
Did we, did that go anywhere?
Uh, well, we have to, we have to go, but I mean, it's, it's under review, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chersky, I want to go back to the fire department.
Yeah, I just want to thank the permission that, you know.
I think you guys put together two very reasonable budgets here, I've got my first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, awesome.
It's not even, it's not the election year, for sure.
No.
Do you think for you, it's not the year, that's a chief thing.
Chief's kind of right, and it sounds like he's been saying for.
I'm a bank.
He doesn't need us.
And get me out of, you think it's in the year that I wanted it?
I did, I do recall it too.
Possibly some other girl.
I do, I do recall that.
You're being recorded.
Okay. It's all in the past.
Those are all in the past, you know.
You're fishing, we all make mistakes.
This is a good, this is a nice career, for sure.
Not gonna tell Austin where it's on our video.
Alright.
So, we're waiting for Brad, Brad's just gonna.
We can review the.
Yeah.
If you have a copy of Chief Baker's, and you have any questions, that is exactly what we agreed on that.
I have, I have a question on Chief Baker's, I just, I just noticed that, I was looking at the uh, turn up gear number. And I know you guys have been trying to do a big push of volunteers, I'm assuming that's what that is?
Well, what we do is we put in, uh, gear is out of service regardless of its condition after ten years.
Okay.
So, we, that's why we have it, you know, similar to what, um, Chief Wagner was doing with police cars, we have to have it in the, the operating much every year to replace gear. Uh, we try and, uh, give each firefighter two sets of gear, so that if they come back from a fire, it's gotta be washed, it's gotta decon, it's gotta be cleaned and dried, ready for the next call, so if something else happens in that interim, they need another set, if one gets, um, catastrophically, uh, uh, and damaged in a, in a fire, they have to have another set, right? So, that's the, uh, ideal, so with the number of firefighters, there's gonna be, uh, someone that's gonna need gear every year. So, we put the eight sets in every year, there was an increase in that line item due to the fact of cost increase.
I can speak to, to as far as like, uh, recruitment and more members, Chief McCollum had come to us last October and asked for an additional seven sets, that was for a.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen full sets.
Okay, and that was for the increased number of members that he had, one thing we did discuss is make sure that they were cycling through their older members are, you know, that are being retained or, or getting the newer sets of gear, and new members coming in that are going through training are getting older sets of gear, until they're.
Well, what we do is we take, if I have an older member that's got a set of gear, just so you all know, gear has a life, a life of ten years, that's the shelf life. That's the shelf life for everything concerned with the gear, helmets, harnesses, boots, everything, ten years, and you gotta throw it out, right?
How's it simple?
So, yeah, everything, this is, this is the way they've gotten, it's, it's, you know, this is what it is. So, what happens is, if I have senior members that are around, making calls, they have to make the calls, they can't just give them when they're not around. I will take their oldest gear, which has two or three years left, use them to bring a new set, and then a new person coming in the door, instead of going through firefighter one, I'll put firefighter two in those two to three years, it's gonna use that older set, so it's expired. Then we'll worry about getting them a brand new set, once they're certified as firefighters. What's, what do you do?
But what's the young, what's the wash rate, for the making, you know, wash out, fire one, and then not making it charge?
You know, and that makes, it's low, for us in Sony Hill as well, I don't know what it would be statewide, I couldn't tell you that. Um, we just completed our second in-house firefighter one course, um, this year, which saves a phenomenal amount of money. Because basically what we're paying for is out of the budget, like, what I think out of the budget is sixty-five dollars a, a candidate for the texting for the state, because the state wants their money, we talked about that earlier, so you'll get what, three hundred and ninety bucks there? And probably another four, five hundred dollars in food and drink throughout the course, because all of my instructors that are members of Bethel Fire teach for free, nobody takes any money. So, if we do that, we're saving a ton of money there. Um, we just got another six through fire one, and the first class, I think it was eight, made for fire one. So, you know, once you, once they're certified, then I gotta look at, when Chief Baker said, I gotta look at, making sure they have the proper gear, right?
Chris, um, do you have two sets of turnout gears for all your volunteers then?
Not for everybody, yeah, we're working towards that, because as Chief Baker stated, that's really, that's the industry standard, and that's, the problem is, if we go to a fire tonight, and we have between us eight, ten, twelve firefighters that go in structure, and the gear gets dirty, that's it, when they go back to the station, we both have an extractor machine at our stations, washing machine, and a drying, a drying area, a special dryer, that has to be washed, it can't wear it again to those fall. So, we need to have another set that they can immediately have available if we have something else going on.
So, a couple of months ago, we bought fourteen sets, and Chief Baker, how many did we buy there?
I did not get any additional over the budget.
It was just fourteen?
He just had, he had the increase of membership that I didn't have.
Okay, okay. So, why wouldn't we do, we dealt with it capital non-recurring, why wouldn't we do that if it lasts ten years? You know what I mean, when you put something like that in your annual operating budget, it just doesn't.
Well, it's in the operating budget to handle your normal, um. Well, it's in the operating budget to handle your normal, um, membership, uh, members. But he had a, uh, increase in membership that he didn't have gear to do that. I didn't have any increase in membership at the time. So what I have in my operating budget is working.
But you carry eight each year?
Correct.
That's what I have in my budget also. I mean, if you guys want to do that a different way, that's up to you guys.
But so you have some.
It's neither. Yeah, yeah.
And how many sets a year do you have?
I'm sorry?
How many sets?
It's eight, it's eight.
Eight, you're very much of us. They both carry eight.
That's correct. And it's definitely going to get, uh, ordered and used. I can tell you that, what I just told you about.
You send a lot of volunteers. You have fourteen, but you're just trying to get caught up for all the new members.
Yeah.
How many members does this department have?
We currently have, it, between fire, EMS and we have some administrative members. As I, I think I spoke to you before about that. We have ninety-four. As I speak to you tonight, with another seven in the application process now that are varying uh, areas of the department. Some of them, some of them for fire, some for EMS, and there's a couple for administrative, yeah.
So I hope we're right around fifty. So if you've seen around in the, uh, in the town, we're really putting a recruitment drive together. Because that's not a number that we're covering.
So you, and that's including EMS?
Correct.
What was that number?
Fifty.
What's the right, what's the right number benchmarking against other volunteer?
You know, when I joined Bethel Fire Department back in October nineteen eighty-two, our benchmark was seventy-five. So I think right now, we're looking at a hundred to at least try to get to a hundred because we have that added class of administrative that we didn't have back then. You were either, you were either firefighter slash EMT or, or emergency medical responder or an EMT. And you did administrative stuff also. Now we have a specific class for that.
It's a very tough number to come up with because it's volunteer. So you have one person that's dedicated that'll give you, you know, twenty, thirty hours a week. You got one that'll give you six. Or some that won't tell you at all and say, I'm, I'm not available for anything this week. So what you have on paper is going to be different than actual.
So I know for EMS, you have guaranteed people who have been into it getting the shifts. I know that. But for the fire, you get a fire call, is there, are there drivers at the fire station or volunteers or is it just like a pager? People drive to the fire department as they get.
Okay, this morning we had a car fire reported just before six AM. And I had thirteen guys out on three pieces of apparatus along with a fire alarm.
But it, so I guess what I'm saying is there's no drivers for the fire trucks at the fire station unless they're watching TV or hanging out.
No, we don't have any.
But EMS, we've always got some of them.
Uh, the paid crews are there and then there's EMS that goes staffing for both of our departments. And they can staff there or they can staff from their home and they're committed to responding to the call.
Is that everyone stays, uh, twenty-four hours now? It's not just at night anymore?
Uh, Bethel and Stonehill, we try as, as best we can. It's not, not paid staff, no.
Paid staff, daytime.
No, it's daytime only. We try to staff them.
Right, they staff you all through the night?
We try to staff them through the night, yeah.
We have, uh, staffing from six AM to six PM and volunteers from six PM to six AM.
Damn. Uh, with, with, uh, perspective of pandemic, now things have changed, work from home. I mean, have you read anything where four people might be available now to you, more volunteers available because they were all? So I mean, I think it's one of the reasons, right, you haven't paid for during the day, but there are people around at night. Is, is that going to change the numbers for you because of the, the shift of people being around town more often?
We have had a couple of people that have had more time to volunteer, but not, not likely. Because whether they're working from work or working from home, they, they still are obligated to work. Whether it's doing work on Zoom or, or meetings, the obligation is still there.
I'll be quick, Steve. Uh, I think, uh, a huge recruitment issue today, fuck with your fire services, that through the years, training mandates has increased drastically, right? So it's, it requires you a lot. It's not like you just could come in and you go to a fire. So you, you're required to meet somebody level of training now that it's a pretty significant amount of time to, you know, that these guys are putting forth, you know, for big causes, which is a, a very large commitment.
Any more questions on?
Thank you for what you do, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Let's conclude our show for tonight. I will entertain a bunch of judges who like it.
Um, votes in to adjourn the board minutes? All in favor? You're opposed?